The order, the regular session of the county commission, uh let's do a few seconds of silent prayer. Amen. Now we're. Uh I think first thing we need to do is approve the agenda. Anybody got any additions? No? You wanna do that first? What she got? What you got?
This was on there that was supposed to add this, this was added to the agenda.
Where you got it? Where you got it? Alright, so we need to make the additions of the recreation board to the agenda and the removal of the personnel, ex- executive session. Try get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Everybody in favor? So that's approved. What else you wanna do? You gonna go to this next? Alright, the next thing I guess we need to elect the officers and the committees. First thing we do is try to elect a chairman. Now nominate Ms. Nikki to be the chairman. Is there any seconds?
I'll nominate Layden.
Any seconds? Is there any other nomination?
I nominate Allen.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
All in favor? Passes? Alright, so now we need to do a vice chairman. Is there any nominations?
I nominate Leighton Jones.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
Alright, alright, so move. Alright, what about the committees? Would it be at the approval to add Jeff's names to what Craig's name's wrong? Would you be okay with that? That'd be easy for everybody? Everybody okay with that?
Need a motion to do it?
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor? You wanna take over now?
Yeah, I guess so. Uh first of all, I wanna welcome Commissioner Cox aboard, and we really appreciate you. And if you have to leave tonight before we go, we will understand we lost his aunt, you know, and so we have a invitation tonight from seven to nine up there at the funeral. And uh I would like to open up the meeting with a word of prayer, please sir. Yes, prayer of a prayer. Dear Lord, come before you after your leadership, your guidance, and everything that we do, from our personal life to county business, Lord, help us, Lord, to make right decisions, Lord. And we just pray for the Cox family tonight with their loss and love, with giving them strength, comfort, and all you can give. And be with Andy Moore, Lord, with his battle with the kidney stones, be with him, help him. We just thank you for all that you do for us. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, let's see, we need to go with approval of agenda. With the recreation board being added to it and the personnel being struck, is that correct? We have a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve.
Second?
All in favor? Approval of minutes, anyone see anything if it's not correct or? If it's okay, we need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second?
I second.
All in favor? Approval of finance- financial reports. Everybody get a chance to look them over. Any questions? Uh we need a motion to approve.
I approve.
Uh second?
I second.
All in favor? Okay, we have a period says local ordinance, Mr. Jerry Mil- Mil.
So basically, we built a house, um, um, back in, uh, so we bought our property back in two thousand eighteen, and we broke ground back in September of twenty twenty. Um, and about February the twelfth, it was February the twelfth, twenty twenty-one, some people bought some land behind us and, you know, to put chicken houses. Which was about six months into the construction of our home. So, um, obviously that degrades our property value and stuff and, and, um, and the whole point of this whole beating is to kinda see about maybe having some ordinances put in place for, you know, agricultural property and stuff when it comes to, to, you know, other people with things to try to make it where you can't just basically go in and do wrong on other people because they actually put these chicken houses, um, let's see, I, I went, I flew a drone, it was the only way I could kinda get an estimate. But they're estimated right now about four hundred fifty-eight feet from my septic tank is the first chicken house. Um, and now they bought like over, I think around a hundred acres and could have put these things way back in the back, which has been away from anybody's houses or anything. Uh but instead, they put the first chicken house four hundred fifty-eight feet from our septic tank and about five hundred twenty feet from our well. Um, so I, I actually did walk back there, um, and I rolled a wheel along, and the first chicken house is about eighty-eight feet from the wetland. Uh which was, to my opinion, is mighty close to wetland anyways for a chicken house to be, you know, authorized to be put in the first place, but, but it was. So anyways, I went back, I, I flew the drone, I pulled up Georgia Sessors site and all and marked off on the map and everything, and then basically, if they would've taken the same amount of space that they put those chicken houses now, if they'd have moved back to the back of the property, which has been away from everybody, they would've been about fourteen hundred fifty feet from my septic tank, or fifteen hundred thirty feet from my well, or sixteen hundred forty feet from my house, which would've been a heck of a lot better than, you know, five hundred twenty, four hundred fifty-eight feet. So anyhow, I've called up, you know, I do water and wastewater treatment, and, um, when this all started, I tried to get the E P D involved, I tried to get Ms. Debbie Henry involved, I tried to get everybody involved I could. Rick was trying to get people involved. I had, I had E P D go out there because at one point, they were actually digging into the wetland, and the, the guy doing it nights, forestry or whatever, told me that they actually had water sprayed out of the ground. So they had to stop that, abandon that, but, uh, it didn't do any good. So the process, and they kinda quit for a long time, you know, we went ahead and finished what we're doing, building the house, and they just disappeared for forever. And I was told that maybe the funding went away for a while during COVID or something, but they came back, you know, and, and that's what got me stirred back up on this again. Oh, they started, and what we've had already just so far, just from them doing it, we have had now every animal that we have, and we've had to pull ticks off of. You can't even, we walked, went through the woods the other day, ticks running up my legs. My dog, who's a German shepherd, uh, we lived back there in the camper for two years while we built, he has a shock collar on that we put up there in orchard fence, never had a problem with him trying to get out, he's a dangerous dog. Uh, and he's gotten out like three times now, so now we've had to get him out of the fence, put him in to go buy a pen and put him in the pen, because he's a nervous wreck because they're back there beating and doing everything right there by the wood line, right there where he's at, uh, near the septic tank. So we put him up front and everything, and, um, he actually chewed through the pen, he's still a nervous wreck, so we had to get another pen, so we've, we're out a lot of money already. Um, it's, they're so close that we got up in the mornings when they're out there, when they were putting the trusses and stuff up for the chicken houses, we have sawdust on our vehicles every morning, which tells you that as soon as the houses are built, you know, all that's just gonna fall right on top of us, we're gonna be miserable already, you know, breathing the stuff and smelling it anyways. And we've had almost every morning, deep decapitated rats in our garage that our cats are killing, so we never had a problem with any kind of things until they start stirring up stuff and messing with stuff. Which that's, that's gonna happen, but either way, you know, kinda what we were thinking is maybe we should come up with some type of ordinances where maybe if you're gonna do stuff like, you have to treat woods and stuff before you start disturbing, or treat areas before you start pushing rodents and things on top of other people, especially in a new home, you know, when they have a house. But, um, anyhow, I've talked to, uh, Tindall Enterprises and I was asking, could, you know, this actually affect our, our water and stuff, and he said certainly, you never say it couldn't, it, it could. They, if you read online, it's not, Georgia's all about chicken farms, so it's all like, oh, it's just a myth, you know, if they're really clean, they're not clean. But nitrates and ammonia things you, you have to worry about, especially that close to your house, and with cancer going around like it does all the time, I don't really wanna be involved with it, but anyways, he said that I'd have to have a hydrogeologic survey done, that underground rivers, you know, are, they're flowing just like on top of the ground. If it's flowing your way, then absolutely it could, it could affect your water quality, or if it's going the other way, it's just gonna affect somebody else, but I'm more worried about myself in this situation, not, I don't care about everybody else, but, uh, anyhow. Um, so anyway, what I've done so far is I went and I had, uh, like seventeen soil samples done right on the wood line, uh, right on the property line I did myself, and I sent them off to, with the U G A, and, uh, got my results back on that, and I've also taken, um, uh, had, sent off water samples to Tindall Enterprises, tested for nitrates and things. And what I'm gonna do is just, if we can't, what our goal is to do is to try to find a nuisance law or lawyer who can handle a nuisance law, because I know there's that, you can get that, you just have to find somebody specializes in it. Because that's, it's protecting people who have chicken farms that have been established for more than a year, but these happened, and this is literally a nuisance on us. Um, if I can find that, we would love a cease and desist, but I know that's probably not gonna happen. So, um, what we're hoping for is to maybe come to y'all and come up with a set of rules and stuff so that if we can't get rid of them, maybe we can put a set of rules in, like I taught my mother before. Whereas like if it's gonna be, if we're gonna have to smell stuff, if they're gonna do, I don't know what they do with chicken house, burn offs or whatever they're gonna do, maybe they have to do that between the hours of two A M. to four A M. when people are in the, you know, in the bed. I, we, basically, we shouldn't know that they're back there, you know, as, as least, as, as least invasive on us as we can, uh, and that's kinda what, what we're wanting to, uh, what we're wanting to do. And my goal is to kinda stay on top of the numbers, check it every six months maybe, and if I start to see something change, then I'm gonna get a lawyer, that's all I can do for that. Um, uh, another thing that we're kinda bothered about is, uh, I think with that program, they have to live there as part of the program, and they cleared out a spot to live, but they're not there. They haven't dug a well, they haven't put a septic tank in, so maybe it should be where, you know, you actually have to be living there before you do something like that. Um, but this has really bothered us the most, me and my wife the most, because, you know, we have two businesses in Cockwood, and our kids go to school in Cockwood, we build in Cockwood. Um, we, we, we do a lot for Cockwood, we try to, but then it feels like, you know, they just kinda let a group of Vietnamese or Korean people, I couldn't tell what he was, wanna talk to him, just come in and just do this, and they're not gonna bring anything to Cockwood other than bump now, um, and we have to live with this rest of our lives, so I don't really know what, how to handle it, you know? But, uh, that's kinda what this is all about. I took some pictures and stuff, um, so that you could kinda see, I brought my soil results and stuff, but to kinda give you an idea of just how close I took some drone pictures today. Uh, this is the, this is the overview, yeah. Yeah, we go, that might be better to go up there, we can. But yeah, this is the overview of the property, um, just a general overview, this is the chicken house, that's our house back here in the back. And, uh, I've got it marked off, they actually have blocked off the natural drainage way where the old driveway used to be, when they first came in, they threw a bunch of trees down and stuff to come in and, and clear out the area. Well, they've yet to get those trees out, we haven't had any more rain, but that's already flooded and killed all of our grapevines on the back. They've yet to get any of the sticks and, and, uh, trees and stuff out right here blocking that old road, so that area floods, and this is marking off about where the septic tank and the, the well is at. This is showing you from the wetland to the, to the, have these little black barriers up now, is about eighty-eight feet from the wetland to the first chicken house that they've, uh, put in.
Who owns the woods right there?
That's actually, I think that belongs to Anafarm, yeah, that's Anafarm, that's theirs also, but they can't mess with it, yeah. That, we got four rows of pines, we have four rows of pines right there, yeah.
That's the owner of the chicken house and stuff.
Right, the pretty green is us, and basically all that belongs to them, that's probably silt.
Yeah, but I, I, I took pictures, November, can I speak?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, November the twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one, I had a conversation with Debbie Henry about this, and I, I know that he has photos. I also have photos where they had clearly made a hill it into a pond, and they had a outlet to a pond running on farmland, which is totally.
I've got that on the pictures as well, I call, I asked Tindall about that as well, he said that you can't do that, you've gotta put in a treatment, wastewater treatment, like, operation, if you're gonna do that, you have to treat that water. And you'll see it in the pictures coming up, the ponds, it's just, like he said, it's just running into the ponds and just going wherever, they haven't put any treatment facility in at all. This is, yeah, right, this is where they've blocked off the, the trees are still blocking off, you know, where the drain is supposed to run on both sides of that, you can see it better than that picture there. Well, there's not, I don't think there's a culvert in there at all, is there a culvert? I had the E P D, they said basically all they can do is just make sure that they're following the rules as far as digging in wetland and stuff, they have really no power to. I, my biggest thing was, you know, this should've been handled as a, a little bit differently, you should have to, if you're gonna do something like this, you should have to get with people.
That's the old road.
Right, yeah.
And this is a new road right here.
Well, absolutely, I mean, if you're gonna have something like that come into the community, the community oughta have some voice about what happens there.
This is the water that runs off of the pond.
That's the pond, yeah, right, that's the pond, their property's actually over here on this side, but, uh, that's their, that's the pole pond that, you know, Robert's old pond is back there, which is what they're utilizing. That's their property, what I was saying was they built here, they could've pushed it way back here, same amount of space, because I marked it off with a thing, and they would've been away from everybody instead of being right on top of us. And see, we've also heard that they're wanting to get more chicken houses already, Jerry McNeese told me they were wanting to get approval for more, and that don't need to happen, oh, at all. We already have to deal with it, just to show them the land, they have about forty-four acres there plus another ten acres back that way, that they could've done anything else, we didn't know, which some of that, after looking at this actually.
That was a field, they put them in open fields right there, is what that was, wasn't it?
No, they cleared all those trees out, those were trees.
Oh, it was all woods, all clear.
Cause I'd be questioning why they didn't do it in the already cleared part.
Yeah, they had a cleared spot in the back. We know why it was done, but we can't really bring all that up, there's other reasons behind why they did it, but that's a part of this being. I, I was actually just, this, I, I was just showing all this property belongs to them, at that, that, that time, I was just showing that, um, that's before I looked on the Sessors side, I was thinking that they could've put it over here, but actually, some of that's wet, so they wouldn't go do anything with that. But back this way, then you're gonna have, yeah, my house is over here, they actually own all of that, I just had marked it off at first, but, but, uh, did I miss anything?
Well, the only thing I was gonna ask is that how do you find out, based on what they're currently permitted for? Are they permitted for future construction, or is that gonna be something that will be in your hands? Who do we ask, or how do we find out how many, what we're actually facing and how many have already been permitted? So, I mean, we don't mind asking the question, whoever we need to, but who you ask for that, and how do y'all, can y'all find that out for us?
I think we're at the proper board, and it'd be the board's decision to set these ordinances to control this thing. Now, I could be wrong, but I think it's gonna be up to y'all to be able to set the pretenses and the ordinances that they have to operate on.
Cause what's it gonna do to our property, babe?
Exactly.
Well, I was just gonna say that, we actually was getting our permanent mortgage for this house that we just built. Our, um, appraisal, praiser told us not to even tell him what was going on back there that he knew, but it would affect our value, so not to say anything. So he was gonna act as if it was not even there so that we can get our permanent.
But basically, we bought and built, what, four houses in our life, been through fires and hurricanes, to build a house is all ultimately is what we wanted to do, and it was a perfect spot, and then this happened, so we're not happy about it at all, so it's, um, it's just one of those things, but.
And one thing to consider as you guys are deciding what ordinances you can put into place and how should they handle, I think one big element is communication, because had they realized, whichever one was permitted first, Jeremy and then were permitted first, but before you okay or, or allow to permit something that's gonna have this big of an impact, you wanna bring the parties together, because if he had had any idea in the lane that this was what was in their picture, they would not have invested that much money to build that much house, but by the time the permit went through for the chicken houses, they're already a hundred thousand dollars committed or more at that time. So that's a, it's not like you could just say, well, never mind, then we don't wanna live there, you know, so that sort of communication is not something that, when they build in good faith, that they could possibly know, so that might be an element that, that when you get ready to build, um, you can't know what future permits are gonna be asked for, but if you would know that before somebody put in a pet farm or a junkyard or a chicken farm, then they would at least have, and there may be ordinances for those.
We may be able to look at maybe having an impact study done on something before.
Yeah.
You allow them to go forward.
Right.
That, that being part of the building permit process.
Well, and I mean, honestly, have you, had there been some sort of process in place where all the, the people who have adjoining property come together? Most problems can be resolved, but obviously, the first thing they would've done would've been leave the, the foliage screen that was already in place around that wetland so that aesthetically it's more appealing, you don't see chicken houses when you're riding past or in the yard, and then also with the smell, I mean, there, there's really not.
We get that every day now, we used to get, oh, it's a beautiful house now, what do they, what do they say every day? How do y'all feel about them eight chicken houses going up behind y'all, so everybody sees it now, so that's what we get now, that's exactly where the house in front of the chicken house.
I'm familiar with that, cause when they would see a raffle head, he's over there, storm going down or something, you know? But man, when the wind shifted just right, or they were cleaning them out, it'd be tough.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And see, that's what Sammy said, he said, when you have one set of chicken houses, that's one thing, but they cycle off, so where you might have the smell or the bad time of leaving the manure and burning chickens or whatever once every ten days or if, whatever happens to be, when you've got multiple houses, multiple groups of houses, you're always gonna be experiencing the ne- negative stuff, because maybe group A is doing it on Monday, group B is doing it on Tuesday, so you can never get away from that. And the other thing is that just common sense says that when it's somebody who is invested in the community, y'all ready, people who have neighbors, who have friends, who have businesses, already own farmland here, it's more in their best interest to communicate with their, their neighbors that are here. The guy who came the very first day that is building these chicken houses, about the third sentence, he said, well, the smirk on his face was, you don't want us here, do you? And we were just shocked that he could say something like that, he thought it was funny, and, um, Jeremy said, no, mate, you're coming and you're gonna be part of the community and go to school here and, and, and do all this stuff, more power to you, come on, but no, if you're gonna tear up this beautiful, these beautiful woods and leave some ugly, you know what, chicken houses for us to deal with, yeah, I got a problem with that.
I actually said, if you're gonna hold true to tradition and filing up, filing bankruptcy and changing hands, and you don't really care about this place, then, yeah, we got a problem with it, you know, we have a big problem with it. Different if you bought chicken houses behind me, or like Rick, Legordi wanted to buy the property at one time, he had done it, it'd have been different, it still would've been bad, but it would've been a little bit different, because it would've been even easier to go to somebody local and say, hey, man, things are starting, starting really, you know, you stay, you need to, you gotta do something, but these people ain't gonna be, it ain't gonna be like that, so.
They're not gonna pay any tax.
No, they're not gonna pay taxes, they're gonna do anything.
Well, that was my question, what kind of revenue do we get off of this from the county's perspective?
Looking at that, I don't really know.
I mean, do we get a lot of tax dollars and stuff, or do they get so many grants that they weren't paying taxes?
I know that David Clemm's down pays a lot of taxes on, on those chicken houses, but I don't know about this part y'all talking about.
They're being my knees and the medical, so they're not even.
I would think they would have to pay property tax, they may not have paid something else, but.
But I mean, surely economic impact is something that the county would consider before they approve anything.
Be something we can.
You know, all I know, we can check with Jerry McNeese again in the morning, I personally talked to him, he's in, and then we were contacting the, our county attorney and discussed it with him, and then, like I say, they just, we'll get an idea of wh- which way we need to proceed to protect this from ever happening again.
Right, right, yeah, cause, yeah, cause just FYI, I've, I've heard rumors that somebody's wanting to put some across from the golf course too, so if something's not done.
Yeah, I heard, I heard.
So there, it will be, there will be chicken houses across from the golf course also, um, and that ain't good for Cockwood either, but, uh, that's not my problem, but still, that's something, that's another reason why something needs to be done.
And that's what we. That, that's what we wanna make sure of, we, we are already stuck in a situation that we don't think that we're gonna be able to get out of it, cause nobody's gonna be able to help us now, but we wanna make sure that our federal citizens and the individuals that live in our community do not end up in the same situation again.
We might not be able to stop the eight chicken houses that are there, but we need to stop any more coming to the, to the property that's there. I mean, I, I still wanna protect.
Stop the ones that are there, we'll try it, but we'll see.
Y'all got any suggestions on this situation?
That's what Mr. Jerry McNeese is wanting to talk to y'all about, he, he has the, all the PDFs on, on, uh, I mean, ordinances on PDF, and he wants to sit, sit down with you, and basically, like. He wants to sit, sit down with you, and basically, like somebody mentioned, a racetrack ordinance. We need all those type ordinance, cause we don't have them now. The whole entire county is structured for agriculture. So he's wanting to sit down with you, go over, he, when he gets them, he wants to go over with you. And then you guys approve them one at a time, and that way, we will actually have ordinance that will defeat this stuff in the, in the future.
And I actually, you know, force the county commission is concerned, and, and this is none of my business. But y'all can do disorderly conduct, y'all can do a lot of ordinances and put them in effect. And make them into the law, and where you get twenty percent of the fine from the state charge. You get eighty percent of the fine from the county charge. Ain't that correct? You get a lot more, and I mean, and that's just, I mean, we need more ordinances in this county.
Yeah, we'll get, work on that. We'll see what can come of it.
Like I said, all we own is just, we're gonna be there. If we can't get them to stop, if we can't find a lawyer who can do anything, I doubt we can. We can't really afford it, to be honest with you. We're rich, maybe we could, but anyway, if we can't, at least, at least let's just come up with some rumors and stuff to make it where we don't know they're back there. I mean, you know.
And if you need some sort of community template, so, template survey or something, if you need to know that other people feel the same way, and then it's not just small. I mean, if there's things, you know, you need to help, so that you got that information in front of you, it's kind of like. Y'all are just starting out, welcome, you know, whole new year and all that, so thank you for that, but. It's a big thing to dump on you, so as you're trying to decide what is the best way, and, and you need to know how impactful it is across the county. We, we were thinking to go ahead and get a petition, but that almost sounds like trying to twist your arm or something. I'd rather it not be that way, but if that's something that would be beneficial for you guys to know how the rest of the county feels. You know, just last night, we, we worked on that.
Well, we'll get to work on it in the morning.
Go dogs.
All right, next story, we, by the way, go ahead and just slide this in, Rick Reesaboy, you want to go with them?
Not really, but I'll go ahead.
So what we got about Rick Reesaboy?
All right, so you know, we all met Friday, um, with the city, at the county, the city retreat. And, um, you guys had elected with them to, to change the structure of the board to. The mayor, city manager, county manager, chairman of the board, and a, a person at large. I'm talking with them now, as, as changing that person at large to another commissioner. That way, it is actually a true, uh, authority board, and the county still will have the three seats versus the two, and, you know, the finance, we'll have the financials.
And that's, and that's just legally right, because that will be kinda handling money, if it's a governing board, so. You don't get just a.
I talked to Cory.
Person in the community.
They were, they were okay with that, or he was.
Yeah.
But I just need you guys to approve moving forward, so I can go ahead and get that resolution drawn up.
All right, I recommend we do that, uh, cause everyone has heard that, we, we know what it's about. Uh, do we have a motion to move forward?
I'm motion.
The second.
I see.
All in favor? Motion carried. Okay, let's go to old business, fueling center report. Everyone seen it, it seemed to be doing pretty good, don't they?
We're, we're still not having to pull out money from anywhere, it's, it's generated already.
Okay, fueling center fence gates.
So if you look at that picture, um, there's also, there's another truck that was parked, parking lot. Um, I didn't go up there and talk to him, but I did talk with the fence guy, and he said that the material is getting hard to get, so. He's still waiting on quotes, you know, it's, it's been, it's rough for him now, so. If I don't get a quote from him soon, I'm gonna reach out to somebody else, but we, we are getting quotes for that fence. I just wanted to make y'all aware of another semi using that parking lot.
Is that a drive, right? That ain't a drive, that's a driver, something.
Yeah, I'm sure that's a driver.
All right, next on this, John Deere's USDA tracker, more. John Deere Place has already got it all put together down, already got the weights, they got everything ready to go, got the more behind it. And so we got to look at the financing. What we come up with here, Doug?
All right, so, so first, we need to get you to, y'all need to approve that one fourteen nine.
Okay.
Um, cause you did it on the phone text, but we just need a formal, we need a formal vote to approve that money.
Okay, we need a motion to approve that amount of buyback, and I say, keep in mind, we get fifty thousand dollars back, you know, on the grant towards purchase. Do we have a motion to proceed forward with that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carried. All right, now we.
So then next, Mr. Allen, um. On the, the tracker trade-in, you know, um, we got initial cost of seventeen thousand, I think it's down to twelve five.
Yeah, twelve five, rest of the morning.
To, to keep from having a surplus that, what we need to do is, is actually put, let them put that on the trade-in. Um, they need to take that off, and then I, we, I, I was, reached out to First State Bank and People South, and they, they actually gave us the. Um, it's in their packet, the, the, the rates that they're gonna do. The face says that it's probably better for us to go to John Deere and let them finance.
It's only for a month or two, cause we already had credit with them, then we could just pay it off, through John Deere Financial. It would be easier than getting another note, but, um, since it's, it was long term, I'd say, you know, shop around, but. We, we're not have, not talking that long.
Yeah, probably three months.
Till we pay it off, and so we can just write, you know, they're already set up, we can just write them a check and pay.
But, but we did. We did receive the invoice today for the one fourteen nine. So, we haven't picked up the tracker yet, so we're not gonna cut them a check, but what we need them to do is go back and. Take the twelve five, if you guys agree to the twelve five, take that off of that one fourteen nine. Then, then whatever the balances, will go to John Deere Financial.
Everybody get that? So do we have, uh, y'all good, it makes, we have a motion to proceed forward and accept the twelve five on the trade-in on the old tractors?
Doing a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I make the motion to move forward?
Second.
I'll say.
All right, all in favor? All right, and now we need to make, I make a motion to go with John Deere Finance, on the finance, because it's gonna be a short term, very, very short.
I'll make a motion for John Deere.
All right, second.
I'll say.
All in favor? All right, got a suitable, Doug? All right, next on the agenda, the an- animal rescue alliance, y'all seen that letter in the package, correct? Doug, would you, uh, tell us, would you have to?
I will. So, you know, in the last meeting, I think Mr. Craig had said that he was gonna reach out to. The lady and let her know what you guys have approved, the twenty-six, I think it's seven fifty-four contract. The amount of taxes owed was gonna be the contract. Well, I actually reached out to her, and she, she will not accept that. She basically said that is the tax abatement between you and the other lady. And that, um, we need to sign a full contract, um, she said. Or forget it, but she didn't really word it that, but yeah, I'd say that. She said they were full, but, but that city of. Iron City signed it, the city of Cockwood signed it, and Seminole County, and I just advised her, I said, look, they're trying to help out both parties. The, the, the lady that owns the building, and also you, and she said, well, that's not between me, so I would just prefer you sign a full contract. I, 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 I mean, if the city of Cock- Cockwood's already got a contract with them, why can't we contract with the city, like, subcontract with the city of Cockwood? And, and do it somehow that way. I mean, that's, that's what I would.
That would be my recommendation.
She did not want that, that tax.
Take that offer off the table that we give them, cause I think it was very generous, you know, and they're apparently not satisfied with it, so this.
And how much were they wanting?
Uh, they, theirs was a hundred dollars per dog. Per day, and then like twenty-five or thirty-five dollars per hour for somebody to come in after hours. Um, and I don't.
Depend on how many.
And, and like I say, you guys said, just found out how much she owed, um, the, the building owner owed on taxes. And then you were gonna give the, the business owner that amount, and then her and the other lady to work out the difference.
And that was like twenty-five hundred dollars or something like that?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Well, actually, yeah, I think it's twenty-six seventy-five.
You know, and I thought it would be generous, so I would suggest that we pull that offer off the table. And then if we have any problem with dog, we just contract with the city, and they can take care of them down there. And we'll pay per dog then.
Yeah, I'd like to know how much we gonna spend.
I'll just have to get with.
You know, in a year, I mean, like, I, I might could even get behind twenty-six hundred seventy-five going towards it, I, I mean, I don't know. Sign up for the hundred dollars a day, though, you can run off a bill pretty quick.
Yeah. Well, that's what it was gonna be, it was gonna be twenty-six seventy-five, basically, what our yearly annual contract was gonna be.
Yeah.
And she basically.
Long stock in marrow, it didn't matter if you had one dog, or you had a hundred dog, you know, that's what it would be. So what's y'all feelings on that one?
I, I'm, I'm okay with that. What you think? You know about all this?
I mean, she told me they were full anyway at the time, so she didn't really act like it was pressing.
Full, though. At capacity already?
The dog, yeah.
Wow.
So we need to go ahead and remove that offer, off the table?
And then let me talk to the city, maybe we can do some kind of contracting with them to, them take our dogs down there.
All right, I need, we need a motion to remove that offer we made to down on Rescue Sheriff.
I'll make a motion to remove it.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, second, girl. New business, approval of vehicle purchase for the sheriff.
Yes, sir, I did, um, actually, me and Brett, um, Austin, and the sheriff went up there and looked at it, drove it, everything's fine, there's no problem with it. Um, it, it's completely, the equipment alone is more than what they're wanting to sell for. So you guys have did a phone, um, call, and everyone, I didn't, Mr. Chris, I didn't hear back from Mr. Christine, but everyone, he just said, as long as he had the money. And I think he's got close to fifty, forty-five, fifty thousand in, in his box now.
So we need a motion to approve the fourth.
Somebody make the motion, Bill.
All right, we need a motion to go ahead and let the sheriff purchase that vehicle.
Um, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carried. All right, we got the G D O T script meeting January thirteenth, which that's gonna be on.
I'll be here, we'll do a Zoom meeting, I need to know, I mean, if, if I need permission, I have to have it, so I just need to know. You got till, I mean, if you can give me an answer tomorrow or the next day, I know Andy, Andy, you gonna try, so he's gonna be here. And what that is, is they, they're basically saying that they have no projects, um, for the next couple of years in Miller County. So they wanted to kinda get with us, um, I asked them about paving, they said paving's not part of it, but when the road widened it. Um, if I can talk them into electric chargers back here, they may pave the parking lot as well. So, I mean, it, it, we can just throw different things out there, and, and see if there's something that we can do.
If they will pave, or if they were widening over.
That's what he said, widening.
What kind of matches, you know?
He did say there was any matches. Yeah, you know what I think about this program?
Not really.
If it, if it comes out, any kind of L M, it'll still have a thirty percent match, but you're still talking. A lot of money that you can get your hands on, you know.
You got any projects in mind?
They didn't say that we would have to pay for it, it's, they're wanting to do the projects.
Right.
There, there's some projects out there right now that they're, like the striping thing we just did, I mean, we did eighty-something miles of signs and striping. It had a couple stipulations, but it didn't cost the county anything, you know, we did it, and they did it. And there's some more programs out there, like Doug said, we gonna meet with them and see what their stipulations are, or is it. There, there are some programs in L M, more than just our L M money we paved with. We just never could really apply a lot, cause we didn't have a lot of match money, you know, to do but one project, but now, we kinda in a little better shape. You can get in a pro- in a program that'll widen the road, and it may still have a thirty percent match, but then you talking. You know, thirty percent on the dollar.
Yeah.
For what money you can get coming in, and then, you know, keep going with your paving projects too. We'll know more about it when we have this meeting.
I suggest we.
To which way it's gonna go, cause there are programs out there that they're trying to push, we got money, we need to spend it. And they're not charging anything, or they may say it's got a little match or whatever. Our county is rated at thirty percent. And they got a formula, the way they rate, you know, by population, miles of road, and ours is thirty percent. So if it comes out of L M, it won't be but thirty percent, but that'll go a long way on pa- on widening.
Uptown Road really needs widening before we, when we surface, while we're doing Bellevue.
So basically, I just need to know if, if, I, I like all y'all, but I really just need to. So we don't have to advertise.
Then that's one.
It's, it's Friday the thirteenth at ten A M.
Okay, I'll try to do that.
I think, Mr. Jeff, I talked, you, you may have, you'll try to hit.
Lady.
One of y'all.
I had to see what.
Okay, we'll wait and see a little bit more detail on that, what we're dealing with then. All right, next on the agenda, Congress for Bishop's two thousand twenty-three appropriations package.
Yes, sir, Mr. Worthing, how are you? Uh, just wanna say briefly, I know y'all are busy tonight, uh, greetings to the new year, Congressman Bishop, uh, the. As you know, Congress passed right before the end of twenty twenty-two, the omnibus bill. And there were parts of that that were, they were controversial certainly, but it did pass both houses and get signed by the president. And the, the benefit to Miller County will be, uh, you will receive a hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars. For, uh, your nine-one-one system consoles upgrading, and there is a, a match, um, in, in there. I think the project total was two hundred seventeen thousand.
Yes, sir.
Right, right, so you will be getting basically three for one, if you, if this works out, but it's, that has passed. And it's, uh, it'll, it will probably take, I will say, six months or more to get the actual money. Um, um, don't know exactly, it, it'll, I think it's a theme grant, isn't that right?
Uh, it is through.
On that security, on that security, I'm sorry. So it, it, it has, it'll be a non-competitive grant, you, you still have to kinda. Tag all the bases and go through a grant process, but it will be non-competitive, and, and, but you'll have to sign off on it, per se, and you're gonna use the money for what you say you're gonna use it for. That sort of thing, but it's a, it's a done deal otherwise. Uh, I'll just report briefly, the, 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 uh, we became aware that Miller County, um, could not communicate. Um, hardly at all with the, the joining counties as far as the, uh, law enforcement. And it became a serious issue with, uh, Justin Bedwell that got killed down here in Branson, and, uh, the. Miller County officers were up there, essentially flying blind, because they couldn't communicate with them, um, and so. Uh, uh, we, we were trying to put in for money for Miller County to get, you know, their system, your system upgraded. The way it came down is that the, um, Regional Commission House, Camilla, will receive three point nine million dollars. To be allocated to the, the counties that need these new systems, and then we. They may run out of money before they run out of systems, because there's a, a lot of counties that don't have the updated system. A lot of cities, uh, so it'll, hopefully the money will go, you know, be used the, the best possible way. But at least it's a, it's a step in the right direction. Um, and I'll just say briefly that the, uh, city of Cockwood, uh, some of you may live in Cockwood. Um, is gonna receive a, a million, one eighty-seven, two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, a million, one eighty-seven. For their sewage treatment plant, uh, upgraded. So, uh, and there's a, a, a twenty percent match on that, by the way, but. So, um, not as much money as free, but it's, but at least it's coming back home, so, so we. Glad to report that to you, and anything you need, or, uh, ideas, or, uh, things we might be able to work on, uh. Please let me know, we'll try to respond, and I'll leave some cards over here, uh, I, I know most of y'all, you know, and. Welcome, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, sir.
But, um, so we'll try to be responsive to your needs.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is department, so we've got road department, dump site personnel, Hill.
Look, Alan, you got two more, you got, you can.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I sure will, excuse me.
I need, um, permission to go ahead and pay that off, and get him to have another one, just so we have it when they need it during the year. Um, Hill, you're thinking about it, we all approving it, I need to pay it off, I told him, once y'all approve it, I'll go up there tomorrow and pay it off. They need to get another one ready for whenever we need to go on it.
All right, we have a motion to go ahead and pay off Tan's load, and. Get rid of first, next one. Second.
I'll say.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion approved. Renew USDA vehicle.
Yeah, that is, cause we can't do a ten-year note, it has to be redone every year, so we're paying ten percent each year for ten years. So I need to make a payment, which is coming out of all this loss, that got vehicles, and then we'll have. The bank these minutes saying y'all are approving him to re- to pretty much do another note for nine years.
Okay.
I just need that in the minutes.
We have a motion for that?
Yeah, and then.
So moved.
The two, the chairman and vice chairman will have to sign on that.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh.
All right, motion carries. All right, now we get to the road department, Andy, you got dump site personnel, L-Meg projects and D O T projects.
Yeah, um, the dump site, we're here recently, the guy that worked our dump site had to have some surgery. We found someone else, you know, to fill in while he was, was out. Well, our normal guys came back, but, you know, then that leaves us kind of with some options at the dump site, you know, we, we had people wanting us to look for a spot on the other side of town. Open the dump site up maybe more days a week, um, but what I'd like to do until we kind of can make some of those decisions. We're shorthanded at the road department, I'm gonna let him help put out coal patch, fix signs, stuff like that, you know, and I got, you know, open salaries. And he's, can still work to part-time, and maybe we could look at some of the other options to see if we wanted to do anything instead of just cutting it loose, you know, until we decide, because we get a lot of people, you know, that have to drive a long way to the dump site and, you know. Something we may ought to put back on the table and look at, and see if we can find another spot, or pu, open the dump site, you know, a lot of people wants it open six days a week. Um, something for y'all to think about, I'd like to just keep him on for right now, and help us put out coal patch, fix signs, help people move, little odd jobs. And he said he was, you know, willing to do that, and then maybe we can look at making some decisions on something else. If that's what y'all want to do.
Is everybody okay with that?
Well, you're saying that you have a position open anyway, don't you?
Yes, ma'am, I do, um, and, you know, a lot of things like putting out coal packs, that's something we kind of need to be staying on top of fixing these potholes. And it's something that, you know, he can kind of go do by himself every day, or if we have a sign down, he can go do that, because they're shorthanded, we are, if we're working on a project, we get a stop sign down, we have to stop, what we doing, and usually if one man's gone, it stops whole. It, it, it stops everything, you know, and he could be somebody, or if we got a, a man that needs to move from one road to another, he can go help him move and kind of saves us where we can stay working on the bigger jobs and kind of a handy, kind of like a handyman, you know, just doing odd jobs. But then, you know, we do sometimes need to fill in at the dump site, because somebody's out, or it would leave us open, because it's hard to find somebody that'll work on Saturday, when you open a dump site on Saturday. It's very hard to find somebody that'll be dependable, and both of these guys have showed that they're dependable to be there and on, you know, on the job and the complaints we get about not being open six days a week, or not having a dump site on the other side of the county, you know, is maybe something we should look at.
I don't think anybody would complain about opening six days a week at the dump, or having another spot.
Yeah, well, that's, that's something, I mean, I was just bringing that option, I really didn't want to just say, hey, guy, you know, I don't have a job for you anymore, when I really got something that he can do to help us, until maybe we could look at.
But if we open another site, we got to have electricity and water and all that kind of stuff, right?
To be honest, a site that I've thought about, and we'd have to get with, back with the same people we had it with, but, you know, Cory and them got the old fire station. Well, so there's that little dirt road right there, there used to be a landfill right there that the county had a landfill there, well, right behind that. You know, it's a small area, it joins Rock Road, if they would let us open one up kind of behind there.
Don't we have to have electricity and water?
Well, there's, there's electricity to the fire station, so we could get it.
Did it run into having the bathroom or something, we had to have a bathroom?
We got the porta potty, had the other.
They had to do a porta potty?
Well, what, what did we run into about?
Is there a bathroom at the fire station?
I don't know, well, they got that fenced off and locked up, because they don't use it every day, it's a train station, but we can.
I, I would just, I mean, I don't know, yeah.
We can handle very simply, if we have them up another site, like, you know, we put in another porta potty. We get some electricity there where they can have lights in the building, uh, but there is electricity there that we can tie on to. At the other side, see, they wanted us to pay a fortune.
Yeah.
Because there's not a light line there at all.
Right.
And, um, I don't know if they'd let us, but that was just a site that come to mind to me, it's, it's off of ninety-one, the visibility of it's not as great, and we're managing our dump site better too. Um, we got, had a little mess over the weekend, but we had a little wind, you know, we picked up some of it down, and tomorrow the dump site guys will be back, and they gonna, you know, clean it up a little better, and, you know, you have to kind of maintain it, but those are things that we can handle, but I didn't want to just cut this guy loose. And then us, look at, look at other options when we got a good dependable man, that if we wanted to move him back to a dump site, we'd have somebody already.
Y'all agree with him?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yep.
I made it very clear to him that we get a full-time position, you know, somebody walks in the door that we can take on full-time, that, you know, he would have to step back at that time, but, you know, we've been shorthanded for several years now, so I didn't see that happening in the next week or two. So he agreed to all that, and he's willing to work, so I just kind of wanted to keep him around too. And, and bring some of those other options to y'all for something we could look at in the future, because there's a lot of people on that side of the county that drive a long way to come over to this side of the county, you know, and I hated that we lost the other one, but they took it away from us. And one thing, it was right on ninety-one, this is a site that'll be more.
Seccluded.
Seculated and.
How much cleaning up would you have to do to get it, get the little site ready?
It's, it's not much, there's, you know, a few pine trees and some scrub trees, there's nothing that we can't handle, you know, I mean, I really, Layden really had just rode out there and.
Right.
Put my finger on it right back.
Escavator out there, and you'd have it ready to go, probably?
I can.
Yeah.
Probably handle that for you if you just wanted it, you know, um, we don't have to put a big facility there, I mean.
Yeah.
With the city taking over, you know, they haul a lot more regular than what we were doing before.
Right.
So we could, we could have a smaller site than what we had before, and still be able to maintain it, I think. But it'd be worth looking into.
And they could work it probably faster than the other crowd was working it, if you got in a tight, you make the call and they come.
Yeah, if nothing else, they drop a dumpster, if they couldn't haul it, they could drop another dumpster to keep being full, till they can, we got a little more control. Now that, you know, the city's involved with us instead of, you know, a company that is in Lee County, um, there, there's a lot more options on the table if y'all want to look at it, we, and that's not the only place, I mean, you, you over that way, you could ask around. Somebody might, you know, let us have a spot, or we just have to look around, but I think a lot of citizens would be happy to see a site up, back up on that side of the county. A lot of people left home and they come to work in Cockwood, and they ride by, you know, in the morning time or on their way home and drop their trash out. Where now they have to drive way on the other side of town and then go back that way, so. It, it is an option, you know, if y'all wanted to think about it. It's just something to think about, but I wanted to keep the man around.
Absolutely.
Till we had time to think about it.
What about you, road grader operator?
I do have the opportunity to take on a road, a motor grader operator that is an experienced motor grader operator. I can handle, with us being shorthanded for as long in, in budget, I can kind of handle the salary, because it's different than a starting salary, until July, but in July, if I take him on, y'all have to help me with it, you know, to keep him on. Because it'll, it'll add a little more money in budget, you know, when we, when we do a new budget, we'll have to, it's not a lot of money at all. But it will be more than what we spending now, but I'd really like to take him on, because, um.
Well, is it a way that you could train him, I mean, and by ten, by July, come, he should be trained.
He's already trained.
Okay, I got you.
What he say, he don't, he don't start him out higher than, than he normally would?
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Yeah, instead of a walk-on pay.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a little more to bring him on than walk-on pay.
Yeah.
And, um, it would free me up to have a man where I can have my excavator running every day. And naturally, we need to be cleaning up some of these dirt roads and highways, and it would just help, we want, help our guide and adding this guy, I could move and keep another piece of machinery running all day long every day. Um, but I do think that we're all right by us not having our full salaries till July, but in July, naturally, it would, it would add a couple more thousand dollars to, you know, our, our labor, and I wanted to run that by y'all before I did. And see if y'all were all right with it.
What you want to start out at?
We start out motor grader guys at fourteen, and then we try to move them up, you know, a little more, and it'll probably go, you know, probably gonna take about fifteen to keep.
Well, what I'm looking at is get an experienced man out on that piece of equipment, well, he'll save you in the long run having a spirit people instead of hiring engine, while we walk through the door.
The chairman of the board in Decatur County is one of his recommendations, and I know, know the man, and, you know, like I say, I don't, I always start y'all a little low for ninety days, and after ninety days, if you can do what you said you can do, and you're performing like you, I'll move you up to, you know, a good running pace. And I think it'd be a real asset if we took him on while we could give, because this man's, he's a hard worker, you know, his past history shows he's a hard worker. Kind of know a little bit about the situation, um, I think he would be an asset to us, but, you know, naturally, we'll try ninety days at a certain price, and then we'll move him up. If y'all agreed to do.
How do y'all feel about it?
I bet we should keep him on.
Yeah, I mean, that's all he is, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Are y'all good with it all?
Good with it.
I mean, he may be found, this guy's gonna find a job quick, and I kind of put him off about a week before I could talk to y'all about it, but far as I know, you know, he's still hunting, and I'll contact him tomorrow and see if we can't bring him on board. Yeah, our L-Meg money, we got to fill out our paperwork, we got to apply for our grant. We got a February first deadline, so we need to decide what we want to put on the paperwork and let, you know, let it get signed, we have to a letter, but we got two options that I see, and y'all may have another one, um, we've all talked about Cooktown Road. My thing with Cooktown Road is I think it needs to be widened, it's got a lot of farm traffic on it, it's farm traffic all the way up and down, and it carries farming into, into Baker County. I think the road needs to be widened and do it just like we did Bellevue Road, widen it and resurface. But we have a problem on Grimsley Road. Jeff may be familiar with some of it, you know, we had a problem up around Bush Road on ninety-one. They didn't really do any damage to us, but we getting a little bit of water faster, because the drain got cleaned out. We got a drain on Grimsley Road that is fixing to blow the road out, it's already sinking, it's got a bad dip in it.
We get to the Robertson's right there.
Right there.
It's been like that for how long?
Well, it's, it's getting worse.
Yeah, but it's been like that for twenty years.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, it's actually getting worse right there, that we gonna have to fix that drain, and we already started paving that road. And why not fix the drain, finish the two miles of road, try to get this grant that we talking about to start widening, and then we gonna have money left. You know, in this L-Meg program, that we can move and be widening on Cooktown too, between what we're talking about Friday, our L-Meg, and we gonna solve a big problem, because that, that's gonna collapse, you know, I mean, it's gonna cave in overnight one night, and then we gonna be stuck kind of fixing it out of pocket.
You hit it now, it, 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 it's getting about nine o'clock.
It, it's getting worse, I'm, you know, starting to get some calls about it, and I know I've been on it and checked it, it, it is, and it's, it's back a little bit from the drain. Most likely, in my experience, what we probably got is an underground stream right there, and when we get big rains, when it gets to that sewage pipe and all, that water can't go, so it spreads, and it makes this part of the road soft, and then that weight's caving it in, and eventually it'll undermine it. When we fix it, we need to put in a French, a French drain right there to handle that underground stream, and when it gets there, it'll have some word of drain, we'll do. You know, it's a process, but we messed up and did that on Thompson Town, and we kind of cut some corners, and I had to go back and redo it, I wanted to put in a French drain on it to start, we had everybody was, no, let's just fix it and see what happens, well, a year later, I had to go dig it up, and we had to put a French drain in. This one, I would do the same, you know, I would start off, put a French drain in it, fix it, and I would resurface, finish resurfacing that two miles, and I would move to Cooktown.
That road would be.
And roll down Cooktown.
You had to worry about it for a long time.
But have y'all, y'all got any different ideas, you know, we, we, you know, we look at all options, but far as me, I think we'll fix a, a problem that we fixing to have, and get, we'll finish the road out that we've already started on. Then we can start with the rest of the money, and maybe we'll get some of this other money, we'll start on Cooktown, and we'll work on it till we get finished. Um, you know, it's gonna take several years, you know, to do Cooktown, but.
Yeah, we had started on Grand River Road, then we pulled off a bit because of the shape that Bellevue was in, because that road was dangerous. Very dangerous, and so I would like to recommend we finish out that, fix that drain before it finally collapsed, because you had to hit it just right now. I know where the spots are, you know, but it's getting worse all the way across the road now, it's starting to sink.
Yeah, that's how we said, that's one reason we got what paving it got, because we, we had a place that caved in. And, um, actually, it caved in two or three times, and, um, we finally just had to go in there, and I took it apart and, you know, fixed it, put a French drain in it, and then we come back over and resurfaced it, we hadn't had any more problems.
No issues.
We don't have this prob, same problem down the road, you know, I mean, it's already getting worse and worse. Eventually, we gonna wake up one morning, there gonna be a big giant hole right there, and we gonna have to do something with it. But it, it was totally up to y'all, my recommendation would be to do that, move to Cooktown, or either start on Cooktown and do Cooktown, you know, I mean, that's Cooktown definitely needs.
Y'all good with that plan?
If it's a safety hazard, by all means, yeah.
Yeah, it, it definitely is, you have to hit it just right now, if you don't, anybody get airborne when you hit it.
Yep.
And that needs to be in a form of a motion there to proceed forward on that, all right, well, we need a motion to move forward with it on finishing up Grand River Road, repairing that dip, and then moving on forward to finish paving it, resurfacing, and then move on.
I'll look at the dip both ways, if we're gonna resurface, a lot of times when we got a major project like that, like we, we had it on Bellevue, Eric, at Luke Cook's house. When, when Oxford or whoever, you know, we'll take this, but Oxford did that one. We let them fix it where we wouldn't have a future problem of if that dip come back, it's, well, you didn't fix it good, and it didn't change the, they didn't charge a whole lot to go in there and fix it, and they got better packing equipment than we do, if we have to fix it ourselves, we will, we did, we did a big project on Molten Road, we've not had any problem out of, but I always like to look at that two ways. If it's as cheap for us to let the company just go pave it, fix it, as it would be for us to fix it, we won't have that problem where if something happens, we call them, say, hey, your work didn't hold up, your paving's going away, we got a dip again in the road, they'll come back and fix it.
The liability falls on them.
Liability falls on them, where if we fix the, we fix the dip, and then we have a problem with the asphalt or anything there, they gonna say, well, you didn't fix it right, you know, and then we have to pay to come back, fix the paving and the dip, but we can, we'll look at it both ways before we make that decision. But, um, we'll do the paperwork on it, however y'all want to do it, but we do need to get it signed and sent in, because we do have February first deadline to get it turned in.
All right, all right, we need a motion then, proceed forward to do that work on Grand River Road, finish resurfacing it, and then moving on over to Cooktown Road and get started with it. Do we have a motion on that?
Do y'all want to widen Cooktown like we did Bellevue? I see Layden, because I, I know they work out, to me, there, there's more farming on Cooktown Road than about any town, any road in town. I mean, it, it's got semis on it, big tractors on it, I mean, it's just a.
How we did it by Bellevue, I ain't heard nobody complaining about Bellevue, so.
You take, you go by and look at, pay them road over, we just, we're just a normal width, and right now, the sides of the roads are just getting bad, you know. I would strongly recommend widening that road, because it's thinking to hold up so much better. Okay, we need a motion to proceed forward with that, we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carries. Okay, Andy, you got D O T projects, that all?
Yeah, our D O, you know, we got these projects coming up, and, um, what I'd like to do is, um, the Dirk Part Avenue and Griffin Sherfield Road. I want to go ahead and do some pretty extensive work on them, and get them, kind of get ahead of the game, because those are gonna become some detour roads. I started to side our mower this evening, and we started cutting on Avenue Road, and cutting the bushes back, I'm gonna move the limb cutter in there, get it trimmed back. Um, the side on mower, take the weeds out, but then we gonna trim the trees, we know what's left. I want to jump out there and ditch them real hard, and look at any problems we got, because, um, I want to jump out there and ditch them real hard and look at any problems we got, because, um, both of these roads are dirt, but they gonna become very heavy-use crossover roads for our local trip. You know, because local people, if they come up ninety-one, they gonna detour across Griffin Sherfield to hit Cooktown to come on in town, because that's gonna be their closest route. Bellevue, they gonna probably hit Avenue and cut across to ninety-one, that'll get ahead of, ahead of that project to come on in, because I don't know exact dates on neither one of these projects, but looking like there's gonna be a time in there that we gonna need these roads. I'd like to go ahead and get them done. I just want to let y'all know kind of that we was gonna hit these roads real hard, um, get them ditched, see about any drainage problems, I know Jeff probably seen on Avenue at the irrigation system, they got drain tile in that field. We may have to put in a piece of pipe right there to get that water to come across the road on Avenue Road. But I want to go ahead and start looking at some of these problems, because these gonna be some heavy-use roads while these projects are going on. Just kind of wanted to let you know that there's gonna be some ditching going on that some of the farmers in the past hadn't wanted to ditch there, because they got some fields there. During this time that these projects are here, I kind of need those ditches to be on these roads. Later on, they want to maybe do away with them at some of these little fields, we'll, we'll deal with that, but right now, I want to put a ditch all the way down both sides of the road. Because I got some water that comes off of those fields that gets into those roads, and, uh, probably gonna need to slow that down some when we take on a lot of car traffic, because a lot of people going to back porch works gonna have small cars. And we need to kind of get these roads ditched, get a good crown in them, and go ahead and get them packed back in and see if, see, kind of go looking at rains and see if we got any problems, and try to repair those and get those roads where they'll be solid for this detour trip.
Andy, you the road superintendent, you know what need to happen for my part?
Well, I know that, but I mean, I just wanted to let y'all know that there's gonna be some places that probably somebody's gonna call, say, hey, I didn't want to ditch there or whatever. But, and, and I don't have a problem if they don't later on, but right now, I kind of want ditches on both sides of the road, because I need the dirt to get back in the road, and some of it, I have some washes right there that I need to stop those washes for this heavy traffic, because it's gonna be a lot more traffic than kind of our normal traffic. And, um, uh, they probably gonna call us, like, hey, you know, we ain't never had a ditch there before, and now there's a ditch there, we don't going to. Kind of for this length of time, we need those, we need that section of road ditched, because there's a lot of water that runs down through there. And we gonna try to calm some of that down, we got a couple little places that we got to work on on Avenue Road that, you know, we have some water issues on that road that we gonna take on a lot of traffic, they need to be a little better shaped than what they normally do.
Andy gave us a big blessing, I don't know if Andy's already seen that big two mountains of dirt down there, it's a garden park down there.
Yeah, right now, we got, we got about four hundred loads of dirt coming in, so we dealing with that right now. We trying to stack dirt, I mean, it's taking a little away from us, but we got four hundred free loads of dirt that come in and.
Where'd that come from?
Across the road, Mike, Mike Floyd, he gave it to us, so we, we graciously.
We need to remember that if we ever.
We graciously took it, you know, I mean.
And he's hauling it for us too.
Oh, he's hauling it too?
He's hauling it.
Oh, yeah, he's been helping stack it, he's hauling it.
That's the biggest part of it, right?
We, um, you know, Mike and I work real well together, among other contractors, um, the people, the boyettes. You know, the people that, some people that done the, we, we, you know, there's no, we're not gonna go out spending the county money with them, but if we can unload something for them or, you know, keep them from bringing equipment in, we try to work together, and then, you know, the county gets it way back in, in numbers.
Well, tell them thank you for us, yeah.
I will, I'll tell them y'all says, y'all appreciate it, you know. Um, Mike, Mike's pretty good, you know, about helping us out, because he knows we need dirt. And he didn't, you know, he didn't want to have to haul it to Bambridge, and we needed the dirt. He worked with some folks that, when we had to fill up the inert landfill, we didn't have the dirt to do it, we was gonna have to buy it, it was, it was seven acres, twenty something feet deep, and, um, we got lucky, and we helped somebody do a job, helped Birdsong out, it helped us out, helped the people doing the job, it did cost us one dime, and they, they helped haul the dirt, and we filled in the inert landfill basically for free, and it, it never hurts to work with some of these people when they're in town working. It's bringing in revenue to the county when they're building something, it helps us out, and if we can do a little something to help them out, we try to do it. I don't really have anything else, but, um, there may be one day this week that I'm gonna miss work. I've had a kidney stone for five days, and if I can get somewhere to get rid of that, I'm probably gonna take advantage of that appointment. I've already been in, at the hospital one time with it, and I'm trying to get in somewhere, so I'll have everything taken care of at the road department, and I'm hoping it's in and out, but you know, they may have to do a little surgery on me or whatever, because they said it was seven millimeters, probably won't go past it, so.
I got a hammer right there, truck, I can bust it in. I got a hammer in the truck, we'll bust it in.
The little girl that scanned it said it has spouting road on it, so I feel like I'm not, probably not gonna pass. But I'll try to take care of everything in the road department, um, anything that y'all got, that y'all need. The next meeting, I'm gonna bring to y'all some projects that I'd like to look at us taking on some dirt road projects and use it, maybe use a little money. Her district, I got Kelly Cross, Layden, we got, um, we got Glass Road, I, I don't know who, if I said Allen's or yours, but we got Newberry Chambers, you know, them big pipes, we got, we got some projects that we need to look at. Maybe setting aside a little bit of our T-Spots money and start taking maybe every three months, go and do a project in this district, and the next three months, do a project in this district. And wanting this district to get some of these real major problems taken care of, because I think Glass Road may be in Allen's or, or between y'all.
It's on the line, I think.
Yeah, I think.
We got some pipes there that they got to be replaced.
They stays underwater all the time.
Newberry Chambers, we got those, I know you've been over them. We got Kelly Cross, and, um, definitely gonna probably be taking on some, and Jeff's from this ninety-one project going downhill, we gonna have to look at, you know, taking that one at a time. But, um, T-Spots money's there for us to spend it on some roads, and we need to kind of spend some of it on some of these dirt roads. And I'd like, maybe every three months to do, look at doing a major project scattered over the county and fix some of these proj, things that's going away. We got a lot of heavy traffic going down these roads, and when these big pipes get weak, these big semis and these big spreader boogies and things are having problems with them collapsing. Need to look at starting to replace some of them. But we won't jump on it all at one time, we got some projects we need to get past, but I'd like to start looking at some of those. And I appreciate what y'all doing to help us. Layden want to go home and watch the ballgame at the.
Ben want to go, Ben want to go.
All right, we got, we got anything else?
I made a motion.
Make a motion.
I appreciate it, y'all.
My second. My second.
All in favor?